Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, September the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at (661) 763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting and all comments received shall be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by myself because I'm the only one wearing an Old Dorado shirt.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Including that person. Followed by an invocation from Pastor Lloyd Francis. So if you'll stand and join us, please. Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, first I want to say thank you for the opportunity that the city has given the churches in our community to come and pray. And as our Father, as we are looking at things that are different than we are normal like to see in our country. Father, I want to thank you that we can come to you and give our nation, our city, our state, and all that we hold dear to our hearts to you. We trust you, oh God, to protect our city council, give them wisdom, guidance, and direction. Father, I pray that you administer to all the administrative staff, all those who are working in the city, and Father, those who are administrative and those who are officers and firemen and the public servants of our community. Bless them, protect them. I pray for our city that crime would go down, that peace would reign, that communication would be strong but respectful. We give you praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor North.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaver is absent with notice.
All right. Thank you very much. First item on this evening's agenda is Citizen Request Public Comments. Thank you. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. We have three people who want to address the council this evening. Louis Gillum?
Thank you. Louis Gillum with Faith in the Valley. Good evening. Last Thursday, Faith in the Valley and TAF United Methodist Church co-hosted a fresh produce distribution to over two hundred families of West Kern. Other local organizing committees such as Compass Unidos TAF, Hobenius Unidos de TAF, Compass Unidos de Buttonwillow were also part of this great work. As local leaders in West Kern, they understand the economic challenges many hardworking families face and how these challenges intersect with food insecurity in our region. Building Healthy Communities and CAPK co-sponsored the event. Vision y Compromiso, California Rural Legal Assistance, and others were also instrumental. The event was open to everyone. No one was turned away, and there was plenty of food for all. Question seven. In the community survey of unanimously adopted six-cycle housing element shows that agricultural farmworker housing was the need most widely supported by respondents at sixty-one point seven percent. We're currently conducting informal surveys in the farmworker communities with which we work, and we're seeing overwhelming support for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing for those in need. The Campesino community is a caring community. We are also delighted that Chief McMinn will discuss homelessness in TAF at tomorrow morning's Chamber of Commerce sit and sip. This topic is especially timely in light of the new housing element. We look forward to his comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next individual wishing to address the council is Bernard Herman.
Thanks so much. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Bernard Herman. I'm applying for a special event permit for mini golf, as well as in the future, a conditional use permit. And I'm here to answer any questions if there are any, and thanks so much for having me.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Next person is Stephanie Molina with TAF Old Dorado.
Good evening. Again, I'm here just to welcome you all to Old Dorado and invite you to join us October tenth through the nineteenth. The store does open next Friday, September twenty-sixth, so we'll be up and running with store functions. But I'm also here to thank you in advance for your consideration of our road closures and use of city property to help Old Dorado happen. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, moving on then. Item number two is Council Statements Non-Action. Councilman Cryer, begin with you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody must know about Charlie Kirk that got assassinated last week. And he was a well-known person. I personally listened to him all the time. He had great wisdom. He was never confrontational. I always asked people that had contrary views about him to come up first to speak. And he was always that way, and they asked the questions, and he responded. He let the people talk. And it was unfortunate what happened, and especially to a mother and two children. I've been getting a lot of response from overseas. I have friends over there. And I just want to make some quotes from people in Slovakia, if I can get to it now. But I asked a question. You have to forgive me. I messed up and packed my glasses, and I didn't have them with me, so I'm going to have to squint a little bit. I asked her, "What do you think of Charlie Kirk?" This is to my friend in a town of Venice in Slovakia. His response was, "It's a shame. I have respected him very much." And I was listening to his arguments, and he was a real patriot. I think it was a political move of the liberals. He could have been the next president of the United States. That's the other person that's in Slovakia on air. And he goes on to say, "Here's what they think. They think a little differently than we have here because the news don't portray what the people say, only what the government talking heads say and stuff." There's a lot of people that are very much in favor of our president that you don't hear about, and very in favor of what's happening in this country. They watch it close because what happens here happens there in our own country. He even responded, "Sorry. Democrats move. I think they did it." "Yes, too much liberalism." "Some people don't know what is a definition of a woman and a man." I think we will all have a great conversation while you're all here in Slovakia. And it went on. Now, in England, they had a big march, three million people marching in England. They've had half a million in France. They're having much in Scotland and Ireland, all in favor of our president and Charlie Kirk. But you don't hear about it. You don't even hear about anything at all in the news about it. Not even on Fox. You hardly hear anything about it. But I see it on the internet. I get a lot of my news on there. And I question it. I backtrack it and make sure it's all correct before I even say anything because sometimes you hear things that's AI or something that makes it an issue, and it's not true. Your backtrack is a lot different from what you hear. But their concern right now in the eastern block because they all border Ukraine and some border Russia. They're concerned about what's happening in the last couple of days, that NATO may go ahead and invoke Title V. Title V is if you attack one, you attack all. And they're afraid because already by mistake or by design, who knows, that two homes got hit by drones from Russia. One hit in another country, Lufthansa. And they're having meetings right now. And right now, NATO is taking a very conservative look and see because they're afraid of invoking Title V. Because if they did, then it'd be a World War III. It'll affect all the countries there, especially, you know, all the ones that border that. Because Putin don't like Poland. There's a good reason why he don't like Poland. And there's a couple of other ones. Sweden and the northern area. They would suffer the consequences. And it's really sad how close we are to an incident that can affect everybody. We're fairly safe here in our own country because we're far away from it all. But if something does happen, it will affect our great country. It will affect the people here. And we must pray to God that it don't happen because all it does is take maybe one more mistake from Russia that they could invoke Article V in that ruling. And I'm sure when I go there, we'll be having a lot of discussions going on because they were afraid when there was still communism there in our country that they were doing things that you never heard about in the news. And my title there at the time was observer and do things. If something does happen, let the world know what's going on. Because a lot of news, they hide things. Then once they hear things and it's kept up and it feels too late, then they start blaming the wrong people. You don't hear the right dialogue that comes out. But I just want to bring that up, that we must all pray and put Charlie Kirk in your minds in his prayers and his family. Also, I want to thank the Methodist Church there for doing what they did, for what they did on the food and stuff. I think it was great. I've known people that went to your place and participated. And I think you got a couple of volunteers too over there. But I think it was great what you guys do. And I know the other churches are doing it. But like anything else, people don't know what's happening and stuff. You know, you do great things. People do great things. But it doesn't go as far as their circle goes. But I just want to thank you on that. And I just wanted to keep that in everybody's prayers. We have a great city here, a forgiven city, as the church has done. But we must do more to help our mankind and be part of a solution, not be part of the problem. Old Dorado is coming up. I think we're all going to have a great fun. I'll be back for that, and I can't wait because unfortunately, I missed the last Old Dorado because I was in the hospital for thirty-five days and I couldn't get out. And I missed that totally. And it's sad in my heart, but it's one of those things in life. You just don't know what's going to be dealt to you. You can be healthy one day, and the next day you're in the hospital and not be resuscitated because you died. And I went through that. And you just don't know what life brings. So enjoy every day. Hug your children. Hug your mom. Say hi, nice things to your dad and your families and your close ones because it may be the last time you do it, and you wish you would have done it. And that's all I have to say, Mayor, and I thank you very much for my rattling.
No worries. No worries. Thank you, sir. Councilman Waldrop.
I too would like to thank the church down on North Street, I think. They were lined up from the church all the way down to Sixth Street, around my shop, and then back up Kern Street. Customers couldn't get in, but I didn't care. That was a great event, and my hat's off to you guys for that. There was a lot of... I got on the phone and called everybody. It worked out really good and I'd like to see that more often. Old Dorado. Look forward to it. Always is fun. I hope we have a good incident all the way through, and everybody has a great time. I really look forward to it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll kind of expand on the previous two gentlemen. Whether it's the gentleman that's here before us in the group that he's representing, anybody that serves of their own volition throughout the community, thank you for what you do. To go to work every day, or maybe you did, and now you're retired and you have free time, regardless of how, why, or when you give your time, when you give of yourself to others, it's probably the most precious gift you can give. And so I'm very thankful for each and every person that does such a thing, no matter where you do it. With that in mind, Steph, please correct me if I screw the number of days up, but I'm going to take a quick page out of our dearly departed friend Pete Gionopolis's books and say, "Only twenty-four may days until Old Dorado." And so with those twenty-four days, we know that there's been probably twenty-four months of work leading up to this, whether it's the Executive Board, the General Board, and any other volunteers or associated with this event. There's a reason why it only happens every five years. And although we wish we could have these sorts of celebrations more often, it's a boatload of work. Most of it goes unseen. And for what you guys do, I made this post yesterday in response to your guys, just thank you to your folks. But from all of us, whether we're here or anywhere in town, or don't even live here anymore, thank you for everything that you guys do because you represent our celebrations of who we've been and where we're going. So thank you all for that very much. The gentleman before me mentioned, you know, the passing of Charlie Kirk, and I won't make a political statement necessarily, but I will say it's very sad that one of the cornerstones of our country, our country was founded on the idea of civil discourse, the encouragement of debate of ideas or perspectives. And I think that it took a very public hit when that man was tragically shot. And I hope that although folks may kind of be dissuaded from taking those sorts of stands, it would be flipped on its head, and folks would be empowered regardless of what you believe in. I hope, you know, for the love of God, maybe you do believe what I do we believe in. But if you don't, it's your God-given right, and it's indelible that you spend that time changing my mind, changing other minds, or at least getting your point across. And I hope that what happened to that man there in Utah isn't a discouragement, but more of an encouragement to say, you know, this is necessary despite the risks. It's important. And that we take our civic and civil duties to ourselves, our countries, and our friends and family very, very seriously and still do those sorts of things. So I hope his family finds peace. I want to keep them in thoughts and prayers, but I hope our folks around here realize how important it is that we use our voice in any way that we can to continue to perpetuate the rights and values that were fought and died for on our behalf. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Another thing that happened this past weekend was some legislation. Legislation that we have been working on and fighting for, for, I mean, intensely, six months. And a great many people have been involved in this. You always have to have somebody on the forefront. And even though she didn't go down as the person who authored the legislation, our own Senator Shannon Grove was at the front of this fight, and she has been for a very long time. The legislation that passed against all odds was to codify our countywide resubmitted supplemental EIR. And in the end, just to give you a brief description of it, in the end, we, as Kern County, will be able to issue up to two thousand new well-drill permits per year for the next ten years. That's the ten years that the countywide EIR will be in operation. And then obviously, prior to its dismissal, then it'll come back up. But we did get that, and I'm telling you right now that the negotiations that took place, the consideration of emerging facts and emerging data, not just, you know, past fantasies, was very, very difficult and arduous. And it was up and down. It was like the Texas Two-Step. And I spoke with the senator many, many times and provided a great deal of data, as did many other people. But we don't have a signature yet. We are hoping that the governor will sign this document either tomorrow or Friday. And then finally, because I hate to count the chickens before they hatch in the state of California, but it is critical. It's a critical component. Everybody knows in order to build a house or build a building, you got to have foundation, right? You got to start with the foundation. Drilling permits are the foundation of continuing to manage existing reservoirs. We're not talking about going out and wildcatting or anything like that. We're talking about managing decline, utilizing new technologies and processes and all of that, along with new drills. So I want to thank her specifically from the bottom of my heart. I know how hard she worked on this. I know that they were in session Friday night until 2:36 AM Saturday. That's when I got the text from her saying, "Session's over. We're going home." That was Saturday morning, 2:36 AM. Then they had to be back in session at 10:30. And there was a great deal of discussion, both in the Assembly and in the Senate. And in the end, we got the votes. It passed. So people, this has been a very long, tough fight. And everybody was involved in that fight, and you all know who you are. Thank you all. And we look forward, like I say, to getting the governor's signature before Friday's end of business. So that's a huge win for everybody in California, whether or not you happen to believe it or not. Beyond that, the discussion globally about the tragedy, the assassination of Charlie Kirk, is something that will go on for a very long time. Civil discourse, like Mayor Pro Tem said, is a critical component of democracy. I mean, the First Amendment and all the above. It made me think back. Some years ago, in the city of TAF, I was working up at my yard, and I was alerted to the fact that there was a blimp flying around over the oil fields. And this blimp said, "Governor Brown, say no to oil and gas." And I went down to the airport to talk to those folks, find out what was going on. And there was a young lady. Her name was Mary, and she was with Greenpeace. And I walked up, said hi, and I started talking. And there was a newspaper man videotaping it. And as soon as we started talking, myself and Mary, then two of her crews stopped what they were doing and started videotaping it, everybody expecting it to just blow up. Well, it never did. Mary and I had a very calm, civil discussion. She told me her point of view. I told her my point of view. And I don't know. It lasted ten, twelve minutes, and that was it. It was done. And they ended up packing up their blimp and going back where they came from. And I went back to work. And two days later, my son was telling me about the way this thing exploded on the internet. So two days after this, I read over three thousand comments on this little video clip. Over three thousand. That was the second day. Of the three thousand, eight of them were negative, pointed directly at me. One of them pointed out the fact that I'm a mayor and I was wearing a white T-shirt. You know, how dare I? But I'm also a working man, so that was one I was willing to take. But eight of them criticized me. But there had been eighty of them that pointed out the fact that, "Would you look at this? Two adults on complete opposite sides of an issue having an informative, civil, polite discussion. How about that?" And then we just went on. That video clip had hundreds of thousands of views. There's over half a million views. It just went viral. But it was interesting that that many people commented that, hey, two grownups can have a civil discussion and completely disagree on a point. And that was Charlie Kirk's point. And that is the reality of what we've got to be able to do. We don't always have to debate or argue. We can discuss and just talk. We can discuss and just talk, and it's a great way to learn. Listening is a wonderful thing before you talk, so I definitely encourage everybody, if somebody's willing to talk to you about it, listen to what they have to say. Give them the moment, uninterrupted. Try to understand where they're coming from, and you can better relay your understanding of any issue, if you thoroughly understand where they're coming from. So thoughts and prayers are with his family. Heaven knows, and the world lost a good man. So that's all I have this evening. Item number three, department reports. Do we have department reports this evening? Seeing none. Item number four is city manager statement. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing additional tonight.
All right. Item number five, city attorney statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
All right. Thanks, sir. Item number six, future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen.
None here.
Seeing none, we'll move on then to the consent calendar, items seven through 10. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any items removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none. Those items are: item number seven, the minutes for the September 2nd, 2025 regularly scheduled meeting; item number eight, payment of bills, some big ones, over a million dollars worth; item number nine, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number 21 for July of 2025. The recommendation is receive and file the monthly report for July 2025 from Kern County Fire Station Number 21, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Item number 10, approval of special event permit 2025-10 for Bernard Herman to develop a temporary miniature golf event during the weekends in October to coincide with Old Dorado and the weekend of Halloween. Recommendation is: motion to approve a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving Special Event Permit Number 2025-10 by Bernard Herman to Develop a Temporary Miniature Golf Event at 421 Kern Street During Three Weekends in October and the First Weekend in November 2025," and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15332 of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None here.
Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items seven through 10.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that's approved on a 4-0 vote. Next item on the agenda, item number 11, 2025 Old Dorado Celebration Special Event Permit and Street Closures. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Taft has received the special event permit request, including the encroachment permit applications for the attached list of street closures, including use of city-owned property, and for the city council to consider waiver fees for the special event permit and the encroachment permit for the Old Dorado activities. Conditions of approval include liability insurance, name of the city of Taft, certificate holder, and the amount of $2 million with $4 million aggregate, sufficient security and safety personnel is required by Taft Police Department and/or Kern County Fire, sufficient amount of restrooms, hand wash stations, and trash receptacles, and one $1,500 refundable cleaning deposit for the use of city-owned property for the flat track races.
All right. And there is a list, which City Manager didn't bother going through, the list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine separate events that require some street closure and the efforts of our incredible public works crews. So at this time, gentlemen, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving the Special Event Permit for the 2025 Old Dorado Celebration and Encroachment Permit for Street Closures," and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines.
So moved.
I'll second it.
That was a tie. You guys were on that one, both of you. Bam, there.
What we think about it.
See what Old Dorado is?
Yeah.
All right. Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second. Well, before I do that, gentlemen, you made the motion, sir. Any additional conversation?
I think this event, every five years that we have, brings our city together, and we showcase our cities to outside our city limits. People come in from all over. For many states, they come in here to be part of Old Dorado and participate in it, and it's one of the best things that we have here, to showcase our great city. And all these street closures and all the activities and stuff, they all always have sponsors and great shows, great parades. Everything about it is first-class, and that's why I'm so extremely happy to vote for the street closures and for helping out the Old Dorado. That's what has my vote. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Protem Bryant, you have a second on this, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ultimately, I'll just say it again, Stephanie, to you and through you to everybody who's running point on those, thank you and good luck.
All right. I beg your pardon. Councilman Waldrop.
I have a few things to say, but I elapsed there, but, you know, this is a great thing for all local service clubs and others. It rejuvenates their checkbook, so they can do all the special things that they do, and it just, like they said, it brings out a lot of fun and camaraderie and a lot of good, hard work. I'm all for it. Thank you.
All right. Old Dorado is about who we are. It is who we have been. I was interviewed just recently regarding the fact that we would celebrate Old Dorado, given the whole climate change movement. And I reminded that individual that the city of Taft and Kern County has provided a critical component of modern life in the form of a naturally occurring organic material, oil, through 21 presidents, 19 governors, and two world wars. We are very proud of what we have done, and we're also proud of the fact that it is just as critical to modern quality of life today as it was in any time in our past, and we will continue globally to use and require more of it every year through 2050. And anybody tells you different is misguided. So I fully support it. We deserve to celebrate our legacy. So, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and we have a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Big giant, yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, that passed on a 4-0 vote, would have been five had the other council member been here. So in honor of our celebration, we have no closed session. Hallelujah. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.